We'll note that Commissioner Frenzel is absent. Commissioner Jackson is also absent. I do expect Commissioner Jackson to join the meeting. I know he has a -- is attending a county zoning meeting, so he'll be along later. The first item of business then is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Voe, say nay. The motion carries. Next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? If not, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll move to Tab 4, which is a non-timetable agenda, and the first item is an introduction, and we'll have Mr. Kessel make that introduction.
Thank you, President Johnson. I have the privilege tonight to introduce to you our new IT coordinator. Aaron Meyer has joined us when Mr. Falsing joined the county as the new emergency manager. Mr. Meyer is recently graduated from DSU. He has a double major in both computer science and mathematics. He is a graduate of Southard High School. He did obtain his degree, multiple degrees, I should say, in four years from DSU. He comes to us with a few years of experience working at DSU in their computer services department as a computer technician. He also has his own private business called TechnoGlobal Computer Services. So he comes with a great deal of experiences as an entrepreneur and as a public employee. He has a broad way of activities and interests, and we're glad to have him aboard. And Mr. Meyer's at the podium, and he can provide you a further introduction. But welcome aboard.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name again is Aaron Meyer. I was born and raised in Dickinson, North Dakota. I attended Southard High School, and then, as Sean mentioned, I attended Dickinson State for a degree in mathematics, computer science, and a minor in leadership. Over the past several weeks, I've gone through inventory and basically learning the various software the city is using, and I'm looking forward to the various ways that I can enhance the city's technological infrastructure. So, thank you.
Well, don't run away. We might have some questions for you or some comments. So we'll open it up to the commissioners here to see if they have any comments or You better have at least one question since I brought them back to the podium.
Just one question, your honor.
Mr. Steiner?
Will you be still be doing the citizen updates that you?
The discussions in Dickinson?
Yes.
We haven't discussed that yet. You know, when we brought Mr. Meyer on as IT coordinator, you'll notice that I didn't reference the title PIO or Public Information Officer. We did drop that from the title because the job of IT coordination has grown within the city. So we're still looking at how to best bring that back. That's been off the air now for several months, so I'm not sure the following -- I haven't heard an outcry yet since it hasn't been on the air, but if we get enough impact, we will certainly bring that back.
I think it was a good program. We'd sure like to see you involved with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll let you go back now. I promised Mr. Meyer we wouldn't start until he got back to the controls back there to make sure we're still filming and the sound is good and all that. So are we good to go? Good to go, okay. Well, we'll move to Item B. That's a Valley Trust settlement agreement, and we'll let Mr. Coling introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The proposed agreement before you is a settlement agreement between the City of Dickinson and Valley Trust Company. As you may recall, Valley Trust Company was a material supplier on the Dickinson Armory project. The city did not have a contract with Valley Trust. We had a contract with Two Rivers Construction, but Valley Trust supplied materials for that project and was apparently not paid by Two Rivers Construction. They did contact the city last year notifying us of the non-payment and made certain allegations that the city was liable for the non-payment by Two Rivers Construction. We have been discussing the matter with Valley Trust and their council for some time, and this settlement agreement is what resulted from those discussions. The total claim that Valley Trust alleged was approximately $30,000. This settlement agreement is for $15,000, a settlement of all claims and release of all claims between the City of Dickinson and Valley Trust Company. The settlement agreement does preserve the city's rights to proceed in the event that there are any defects in the materials or the supplies that Valley Trust provided, but it would fully resolve the claims that Valley Trust has made regarding non-payment for their materials. Be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. I would just add that when Valley Trust's council sent the city a letter some time back notifying us that they intended to bring a lawsuit over this matter, I met with Mr. Coling and Mr. Kessel, and while I agree with Mr. Coling that I don't think legally the city was liable here, I did encourage them to try reach a settlement agreement because even though we weren't, in my view, legally liable, we didn't handle the project well. It was, you know, a project that was under the direction of a city employee, a city management employee. We didn't handle it well, and I just felt that, I guess morally, that we did have some obligation here, and so I encouraged them to try to reach a settlement. It's not something that they were out there doing on their own. But I -- as Mr. Coling said, I think they'd be happy to address any of your questions or hear any of your comments as it relates to this matter.
Where do we stand with any of the other vendors that were affected by this? Is this, you know, first and last to come, or will there be more, or where are we at?
Commissioner Altman, I -- we've not been approached by any others via an attorney. I don't -- it may not be the last. There are other vendors that were involved in this project. Not all of those vendors received payment from the prime as they were supposed to, so it may not be the last. But I can't identify for you how many that may be or the cost of what those potential claims could be as well.
Okay.
I do think, though you're confident that this was the single largest unpaid vendor out there, and that the others, if they're there, are smaller in nature.
I would agree completely with President Johnson on that.
I think it's -- I think, at least from my perspective, if we're approached now again on the Armory with vendors that were unpaid and if they can substantiate those, that we would negotiate with them to arrive at very similar terms that we arrived at with Valley Trust. Would be my feeling at least, you know.
Mr. President, I would agree. I think in light of the way that it was handled by the previous city employee, I think you were correct morally. We do have an obligation here, and I'm glad that we could come to an agreement with them on this.
Mr. Kessel.
President Johnson and Commissioner, I just want to make sure the commission is aware that this project remains unfinished. We did meet with the contracted engineer and architect today, and we should be bringing before you shortly then a bid package to complete this project. So there are going to be other expenses involved. I just don't want to make -- I want to make sure that it's clear that there'll be additional expenses related to the completion of that structure or the complete renovation, so.
So at this time, Mr. Coling would be requesting approval of the agreement. There's no other discussion. Are you ready for a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I move we approve the agreement as stated.
Is there a second?
I will second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Move to Item C, and that's the Cook Meadow Hills First Annexation, and I think, Mr. Coling, I think that's also your item to introduce.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners. The proposed resolution before you is a resolution regarding the annexation of Cook Meadow Hills' first addition, along with two other properties immediately to the south of that new addition. You recall, the city commission did pass and adopt a resolution calling for the annexation of this property. Pursuant to state law, property owners within the annexation area have 30 days in which to file written protests of the annexation. That 30-day time period has passed, and there have been no written protests filed by any of the owners of the proposed annexation area. We do remain in discussions with the other two property owners that are not involved in Cook Meadow Hills' first addition regarding improvements to their properties and how they are going to be incorporated with the city's road system and water and sewer system, and those discussions are ongoing. But since there have been no written protests filed, the resolution before you finds that less than 25 percent of the owners of property proposed to be annexed have filed written protests, and that the property described in the resolution is annexed to city limits.
And did you tell us the resolution number?
It's gonna be Resolution 31-11.
31, okay. Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction. Comments or questions by Commissioners?
One question, Mr. President. I did hear from one of the two property owners, and they just wanted to verify that their two properties are still considered ag, zoned ag.
Yes, Commissioner Steiner, that property does not change in zoning at all. That would have to come before the zoning board and before this commission, before the zoning of that property would ever change.
That was their only concern. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, would there be a motion regarding Resolution Number 31-2011?
Chairman, I'll move to approve 31-2011, the annexation resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Brings us to Item D, reports. I guess that's city administrators' reports.
Thank you, President Johnson. The first item is a letter that I penned. It was provided to the Stark Development Board. The request made in the letter is to fund a couple of projects that the city has in support of industrial development throughout the city and more specifically on the north side of the community. The first request was to fund the modeling, water and wastewater modeling that we hope to have an award to a consultant and completed by or before the comp plan is completed. That information will be used then during the comp plan to help determine where best to locate certain zoning or land use choices as we move forward in that process. We did obtain a grant from the Department of Commerce to defray about $30,000 of those modeling expenses. We anticipate that the cost to do the modeling work will be anywhere between $150,000 and $200,000. The second request was to partner with the city and provide grant dollars to construct a wastewater pipe serving land on the north side of our community. The bid for this project was around $450,000 for the construction. In the end, it'll be about a $500,000 to a $520,000 project, assuming everything goes well. This construction of this pipe actually foregoes the construction of a pump station or a lift station, so it is in our best interest to construct this pipe so that we don't, number one, don't have to construct the lift station, and number two, we don't have to operate or maintain it down the road. So it is a very cost-effective pipe that we're asking, and it services an industrial area. So that is why the request is being made of Stark Development. The meeting is tomorrow, and they'll likely make a decision on those requests tomorrow. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the next item. Next item is another grant. It's the USDA Solid Waste Management Grant. We were informed that as long as the rest of the process flows smoothly, that we'll also receive this grant. I want to give thanks to Jared Andrist. He has assisted us a great deal in writing the application for this grant. It is to assist us with training efforts to try and make sure that our waste stream is as minimal as possible, to try to extend the life of our current landfill, and to promote recycling efforts in the community. So we are going to follow through with the remainder of this grant, and as I've been told from USDA staff, as long as that all checks out, that we'll be the proud and glad recipients of these grant dollars. It's about $20,000 of a total of just over $30,000. The remaining items are just simply a thank you note, and then there's also an Attorney General's opinion. There was an article in the Dickinson Press earlier, and if you have any questions about that, I believe Attorney Coling is able to answer those more specifically. So with that, that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions for the city administrator? All right, if not, we'll move along to Tab 6, Public Works Planning, and Mr. Cortan, we'll turn this portion over to you.
Okay. The -- Mr. President, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is the final plat for Vaugin subdivision. The site is located north of 35th Street southwest and approximately 1.5 miles easterly of the city's city limits. Subdivision consists of seven lots ranging from nine acres to 40 acres. Lots fronting via 35th Street will have joint access driveways. The planning commission and city staff recommend approval. As was noted in your Commissioners' packet, I want to remove my recommendation for condition of approval requiring the county road easement to be dedicated to the public, as this issue should have been addressed at the preliminary approval stage instead of that final plat approval. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
And this is Resolution Number?
Resolution 32.
32, okay. All right, you've heard the city planners' report. Any comments or questions by city Commissioners here?
Mr. Cortan, the issue along the south boundary, am I understanding you to say that had you realized that at the preliminary stage, you would have advised otherwise?
That is correct.
And that would be, what would that preference have been?
That would be from the center line to the outside edge or the edge that butts on the property line, the county road easement. So it'd be 75 feet dedication along the southern boundary of the plat. Mr. President, if I may add a point, I called and talked to Alhizer at the county, and he also concurs with my assessment. He's not recommending that the dedication should go forth either.
He's not recommending what?
He's not recommending that the dedication, that we should require dedication at final plat stage either.
For the same reason that you're not?
I'm not sure in his reason.
President, it's really, it's very normal that that road right-of-way would be dedicated. It's done all the time, and I understand Mr. Cortan's concern that he didn't bring it up earlier, but it's still the right thing to do, and I think we should approve it based on having the dedication like we would any other plat.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anybody else have comments? I know there are representatives here from Vaugin, and if you would like to address the commission, we would certainly let you address the commission and give us your thoughts on this, if you'd like to. In other words, we're inviting you to join the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name's Bob Prosev. I'm the land surveyor that worked on this parcel. Part of the confusion is, is there is an easement already there for county road at 75 foot wide. So dedicating easement that already exists is kind of redundant. There was some talk about turning the easement from an easement to a fee title. That's done many places, but being the easement already existed, the landowners are giving the county, the city, something they already have. If you have any questions?
Then there shouldn't be a problem.
There shouldn't, there's, the road's built, the fences are at 75 feet, there's a record easement at 75 feet, but the county holds it as an easement versus fee title. That's the only difference. So I mean, basically, the county has what they already have.
Where would you measure, if the south lot line is out on the section line, where would you measure the setbacks from?
Well, that's a zoning issue, and I would suspect the prudent place to measure setbacks would be from the right-of-way line. You can't have, you know, if you go all the way to the center of the street, you could possibly violate your proximity to public road.
I assume the lots will be sold on an acreage basis, I suppose.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there anything else you'd like to say from?
The only thing I can add to the discussion is I did contact Attorney Henning with the county to discuss the matter, and, I mean, if the county has an easement, he couldn't think of any reason why the county would necessarily need fee title. I mean, a perpetual easement, you have the right to use that property just as you would for road purposes as you would if you had fee title. So he couldn't see any reason and didn't think historically they had required fee title. So I'm not sure why this became an issue, but would urge you to approve the plat.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted one more thing. I guess that one of the other major things is that that 40-acre lot would be less than 40 acres, giving them, giving my dad less stature as a 40-acre landlord for agricultural and so forth. That was another concern of ours.
Okay, thank you.
How would that affect anything? Being less than 40 acres?
Yeah, come up to the mic if you're going to answer that.
I might be missing something there.
Because if you take fee title.
Start, excuse me, come up to the mic and start over.
All right. If the county has fee title, he then has less than 40 acres. If you have an easement, you have the right to use property, but you, the owner of the property still has an interest in the property.
I understand that.
Okay, so if you take that portion, it reduces his 40 acres to less than 40 acres.
But what's the significance of the 40?
It is for agricultural purposes. There are some programs where a landowner needs to have 40 acres.
However, probably a minor issue, but some ag issues require 40 acres. I'm dealing with some on my personal things also.
I want to make a mountain out of Mill Hill. The 40-acre thing is the only thing that makes sense to me at all. We've, it's common when we do plats to take the street right-of-way, road right-of-way that we need to facilitate the subdivision. We do that every time we do a plat. You know, technical issues of how you measure setbacks, they will pay taxes on the ground out to the center line. Property will get sold. It's not a big deal. It's not big dollars or anything. They're going to pay taxes on those acres. The ag, the 40-acre ag thing, I guess I'm not sure about that.
However, I live out in the country, and I have an easement also, and that's taken out, that is not taxed. Taxessor pulls out that right-of-way. So, you know, in examining the title as is thing, seeing there's already an easement there, so I was, why recreate the wheel? Was my opinion on it.
Anything else from other Commissioners here? Mr. Cortan, anything else you would add to this?
No, Mr. President.
Well, then our choices are to pass the resolution as is or to amend it, or I suppose defeat it, but I don't think I heard any discussion here that really makes that a viable option. But I guess if Mr. Cortan is comfortable with the way it's written, so am I. I think what I heard you say is on a go-forward basis, you're likely not to do it this way because you'll deal with this earlier in the process rather than later. Is there any other discussion? Is there a motion then regarding this item?
Mr. President, what would be the resolution number?
It's Resolution 32-2011.
32?
32.
I'd move we approve Resolution Number 32-2011.
I would second it.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. It's 5:00. We'll go to the timetable agenda. That's Tab 3, and the first item there is a special use permit, and we'll let, Mr. Cortan, are you introducing this item also?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. Mr. President, Commissioners, community action partnership is requesting an SUP or special use permit to expand their current operation into --
construct a new building to house around 60 young children. As part of the review of this project, city staff noticed that the facility needed a special use permit in several variances in order to build their building due to the irregular-shaped lot. The Board of Adjustment last month granted the building setback from 15 feet to 2 feet along the northern property line and a parking lot setback variance from 10 feet to zero in order for them to provide enough room for parking and drive aisles to sufficiently provide vehicle access on site. The applicant will also erect a 6-foot opaque fence along the property line facing the parking spaces to the south. The Board granted the reduction, the Board of Adjustment also granted a reduction in the total number of parking spaces from 30 to 25. The employees will use the parking lot to the south and west to free up available parking for the public and the public will use the east side of the building for their parking. There was one public comment at the last meeting, the neighbor to the south, and it appears this issue has been resolved with the applicant. They were originally opposed to the reduced setback for the parking adjacent to their property and it appears that they've worked things out with the applicant. The Planning Commission and city staff recommend approval and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner.
You did say that the parking would be available for public.
To answer your question, Mr. Steiner, the parking on the east side is going to be all available for the public. That would be the entrance into the new building. Along the south and also to the west would be for the employees. They are able to, we're able to work things out with the applicant to make sure that the employee parking, since they come in at a certain time, that they are further away and they're not going to occupy the parking that would be necessary for dropping off of the children and picking up the children during the day.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, would there be a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve the special use permit.
I will second.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're going to jump back into Tab 6, Item B, and Mr. Soren, are you introducing that item?
Mr. President, I'll be introducing that item.
Well, what do we need Mr. Soren for if you're doing all this? You wonder.
I'm not going to comment on it.
Okay. Well, go ahead then.
Mr. President, Commissioners, Marquee Properties is requesting, Marquee Properties has presented in front of you tonight a petition request to rezone the property from R2 to R3.
No, no.
No, no, we're on...
We're on 6B. It's not 510 yet.
That's why you need Mr. Soren.
It is Mr. Soren.
I could take care of this one as well.
I'm sure you could. By the time you two are done, it will be 510 and we'll be back to the timetable.
Probably so. Mr. President, Commissioners, the selection committee recommends awarding the 2011-2012 Comprehensive and Transportation Plan to the consultant firm of Katermis Lee and Jackson. KLJ submitted the best overall plan and performed the best in the interview. The selection committee consisted of Sean Kessel, Sean Soren, Galen Baker of Stark Development, and Stacy Hansen of DOT and myself. Six firms initially submitted proposals to the city. In late April, the selection committee met and eliminated two of those. In late May, the city invited the four remaining firms to interview and it became apparent that after the interviews, that KLJ proposal was the best proposal and also presented the best during the interview stage. Some of the reasons why I felt that KLJ was the best, they were fully committed to the project, both local and dedication to this project is excellent. Excellent access and local commitment to meeting the deadlines and being available to the city. Excellent knowledge of the oil industry and how it will affect the short and long-term population and local economy. Best overall team to create the comprehensive plan. This also would involve population studies, economics, local knowledge in planning and transportation. Excellent public involvement process. The establishment and comprehensive plan of a level of service standard for developments to be reviewed by and to be consistent for monitoring of those levels. And for these reasons and others, the selection committee recommends awarding the contract to KLJ. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Maybe for the general public's benefit, can you just give a brief description of or what the expected outcomes are of this comprehensive transportation plan? What the benefits to the city will be?
The benefits of the city will be that this plan will provide the visions for the city for the next five, 10, and 20 years. The plan itself will factor in the existing inventories, where we have areas of development, where we see areas of development, how would we finance our infrastructure, where should we put additional infrastructure, where should we change some land uses, where our transportation network should go, where our park system should be located. Instead of a plan or development proposals that are piecemeal that we review whenever they come in, this plan will actually set forth a policy document or a document that we could use as a city to analyze projects, to direct development, so that it's orderly, so that it's effective and efficient for the community. I think a lot of times people get frustrated because of the inefficiency sometimes because of development. And this plan will have a good plan to look at development and see where it should go and to provide cost for that, so that we are fiscally conservative, so that we are efficient in development and it's done in an orderly way.
Thank you. President Johnson, if I may add?
Yes.
I'd also like to add that this plan will not be done in a vacuum, that we will ask that the public be involved in this plan at several stages along the way. It's imperative that they do join us to help direct where they want to see the future of the City of Dickinson go. One of the reasons why all of these firms were judged upon is the level of public input. And I think that's important, that the community knows. We want them involved in the process. And I'll also just mention that one of the other reasons for doing the plan is substantiation. We are a fast-growing community at this time and the types of outcomes that will be developed through this plan can be used through legislative processes to be used for substantiation for projects that are ongoing and for resources, additional resources we may need for them to partner with us. So I'd just like to add those couple things.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Other comments, questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.?
Can we also expect that this plan will address some of the traffic problems that we have in the community right now?
With respect to your question, Commissioner Jackson, absolutely. As part of this plan, we'll be looking at our current transportation networks and seeing alternatives or avenues for us to pursue to alleviate, let's say, our truck route. We're talking about where our truck route should be, well, for the interim and then also for the long-term process. And then also our transportation networks of where our future road corridors should be, where our boulevards may be, so that as development moves forward, we could at least have those dedicated as part of the plats and development so that we have a consistent and orderly transportation network that will alleviate the pressures that we have currently.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you for the introduction and the response to the questions. Would there be a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve the 2011 Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
I'd second it.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion?
Mr. President, I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Okay, Mr. Jackson will abstain. Any other comments, questions? Hearing done, then we'll vote on the motion. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a 510 timetable agenda item, so we'll move back to that. And that's a rezoning petition. And Mr. Cortan, if you'd be so kind to introduce that item.
Mr. President, Commissioners, Marquee Properties, this is a petition request to rezone from R2 to R3. The site is located north of 21st Street West and east of Prairie Oaks Avenue and west of the Century Apartments. The proposed rezone is consistent with the land uses and properties to the east and northwest. The Planning Commission and city staff recommend approval. Chairman Abra Hansen received several phone calls concerning the rezone during the Planning Commission meeting. One person spoke in opposition, but later after clarification with city staff, they changed their opposition to it. And with that, I conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, the staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cortan. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody wishing to comment regarding this proposed ordinance may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? Not, we'll declare the public hearing closed. This is ordinance number what, Mr. Coling?
President Commissioners, this would be ordinance 1417. It is misnumbered in the copy that's in your books, but it would be 1417.
1417, okay. Any comments by other city staff or city commissioners regarding this proposed ordinance? There's none. Would there be a motion regarding the first reading here?
President, I'll move to approve first reading of ordinance 1417.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us down to reports under Public Works. Excuse me. Mr. Soren, is that you?
Mr. President, Commissioners? We'll get this together. In front of you are included in your commission packets is the code enforcement report for May. If you notice, under new building permits, commercial structures compared to date from last year, there's a significant increase in commercial structures, which is also representative for the new building permit values. As of today, as of the end of the cycle, it's 18.9 million compared to last year of 1.8 million, so a significant increase in cost or values for our commercial projects. Also, to date, when you factor in all of the commercial projects, it's 26.8 million compared to 15.3 million from last year. Under alteration building permits, there's been more commercial in that area as well and we are continuing on with the same amount of alterations, as it were, last year. Below the alteration building permits, commercial structures has had a significant increase as well, from 9.9 million compared to last year of only 323,000. So a significant increase in our building activity is directed towards commercial. We are keeping up in our single-family and residential as well. And lastly, our miscellaneous permits are at 200 for this year compared to 172 of last year. So a significant increase in our building activity from last year. The good part of that is there's a significant increase that's on the commercial side, which compared to years in the past, it's been more related to residential. And this year now, we're starting to catch up in the commercial sector of our employment or review of building permits. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Any comments or questions by city commissioners here?
Mr. President, Mr. Cortan, the public might be interested to know what those six commercial permits are this month. Can you list a few of them at least?
With respect to your question, Commissioner Jackson, I couldn't add to that. I didn't get those figures before the meeting.
Okay.
A year ago at this time, we'd issued 13 multifamily and row housing building permits. As of then to May, we've issued two. You know, I think our community needs quite a bit more multifamily housing. I guess, what's the outlook for the balance of the year? Do you think, can we catch up with what we did last year? Or are we going to build less multifamily units?
With respect to your question, Mr. President, I have personally talked to several developers that are looking at doing townhouses and row housing. They haven't submitted, but they have talked to me since the short time that I've been here. So I would anticipate that we'll be able to close that gap in the near future. I know that Roars is looking at doing townhouses and there are several other developers that we're doing, looking at either fourplexes or sixplexes. They just haven't submitted their plans. So I would anticipate that gap will be, we'll definitely be able to close that gap, if not exceed it, probably by the end of the year.
Other comments or questions? Is there anything on the Board of Adjustment meeting minutes that you would highlight?
Just wanted to highlight on there the discussion that we had for the prior application for the SUP for the Community Action Partnership. I included those minutes so you had an opportunity to read the minutes for the variance for that particular project.
All right. Commissioners have any comments or questions for either Mr. Cortan or Mr. Soren? Mr. Soren, is there anything you can say about this season's street projects? Anything unusual happening? Are we, appear to be on schedule with things?
We appear to be on schedule with almost all of our projects, with the exception of a Seal Coat project. We're probably going to be pushing that off this year. Some of the areas that we were planning to do are getting beat up pretty bad with all of the development and we got behind the eight ball on that. I would like to point out, as it goes to street projects, we do have a lot of development projects in the works that we're working on, which include water sewer streets. Washington 4th, they're finaling their last phase. We're in the process of dealing with Painted Canyon subdivision, Painted Canyon Estates, all have water sewer street improvements. North Industries is picking up and moving forward. Along with that, Porter Seconds directly south of there, they're doing 29th Street water and sewer improvements in that area. The Cook Meadow Hill subdivision, they started doing some dirt work. At the next meeting, we're going to have development impact fees for that project coming in front of you as that project moves forward. Estates 5th and 6th, if you've been out on the west side of town, you can see that's well underway and we're working with them on the development of that area. As well as on the south side of town, we're still dealing with the KLD subdivision. Last year, they stripped all the soil and so we're working with them on trying to get some of the issues we have with erosion and the development resolved in that area. So we've got a lot of things happening on that front as we're moving forward. Our 18th Avenue Urban Roads project will be, it's actually two phases. We had a stormwater phase. As you might have noticed tonight, we did have a permit application to be in the right-of-way of the I-94 business loop for that. We'll be opening... We'll be opening bids on that project shortly, trying to get that project completed. And then I think June is the bid letting for the, the street project, which is 18th Avenue from the business loop up to 9th Street. So, the other thing that we haven't talked about much this spring but was a hot topic last fall was downtown parking. We are working with Highlands Engineering on getting the parking lot by West Winds Consultant done, so we can get that done this summer too. And so we do have that on our radar as well.
Thank you. Other comments, questions for the city engineer? All right. Well, then we'll move back to the timetable agenda. We have a 520 item. It's a special use permit. And, Mr. Carton, are you introducing that?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, Commissioners, this is a petition request for an SUP for an electric substation located off 40th Street East and southerly of 4th Avenue East, which will be the future extension of that road. The site is located a half mile from the intersection of Highway 22 and 40th Street East. The proposed landscaping plan that they have submitted will need some necessary modifications. And if they decide to proceed forward with their landscaping plan, they'll need to go through the Board of Adjustment to get a variance for that. At the Planning Commission meeting last month, as part of the recommended condition for, recommendation for approval, they required Rough Rider Electric to meet with the property owner to the north or across 40th Street East. They have met with the property owner to discuss a potential alternative location, and they have chosen not to entertain that site due to, due to excessive cost of putting it under the street. And they are proceeding forward with their current location. The Planning Commission and city staff recommend approval. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carton. Any questions, comments here? I wasn't sure from your comments, if, if we act favorably on this request, are we, are you suggesting we put some special conditions or some conditions on the special use permit?
I looked, to answer your question, Mr. President, I looked at the special use permit provisions, and landscaping is not one that can be modified. It appears to me that the proper avenue would be through the Board of Adjustment. There are some variations that would allow, through a special use permit, some design requirements that could be modified, but I didn't see anything for landscaping. So for them to modify their landscaping, they would need to get it, they would need to get a variance through the Board of Adjustment.
Okay. Any other comments, questions here? Not, is there a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve the special use permit as requested.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion?
One question, Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner?
When you talk about landscaping and so on, I do see on the view from the west, it appears that it is going to be a slatted fence. Correct?
To answer.
Slatted fence, I should say.
To answer your question, Commissioner Steiner, I believe it's going to be a slatted fence. They were, originally I was talking to them about to have an opaque fence to soften the appearance of it, but due to its location and the winds that we do get here would just be, it would just collect a lot of the snow. So they, they would prefer to have a chain-linked or a cyclone fence with some slats, I believe. I'm not sure if that's their latest proposal to do slats. I think that that would allow the air to go through or the wind to go through so that you wouldn't have that accumulation of the snow. On the, on the east side and the south side, they have proposed trees which are a good buffer for the residential properties to the east, but the landscape requirements require to the north and to the, to the west along the roads, a 10-foot landscape buffer. They're proposing just to have, at this point, no vegetation, no trees, and just to have it gravelled or rocked, and that would require a variance in order to have that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Not, we'll vote on the motion. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Brings us down to Tab Seven. Are there any comments or reports by city commissioners? Not, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Good afternoon, President Johnson, Commission. I'm Craig Kubis with Katermis Lee &amp; Jackson. Just like to thank the selection committee and the commission for, for approval of Katermis Lee &amp; Jackson to complete that comprehensive plan for the city. We have a lot of work ahead of us. It's an exciting project, though, and we're looking forward to get going on it. We have a scope of work drafted, and we'd like to start setting up some meetings with your staff so we can get the scope of work approved as quickly as possible, so we can come back to the commission with an agreement as soon as possible. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the commission? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. All in favor of adjourned?